Okay, we're gonna do the short form first. So this is the nine twenty-nine. This is SB. Twenty-two eighty, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt the proposed SD one. And recommit to ways and means. So this bill is. Rather important, what this is gonna allow, talking to Biden, budget and finance over the intro. They developed or defined three different ways that we may be able to finance capital improvement projects that are non-traditional that use private financing. And because of the situation with where the budget is at, we want a vehicle to try to see if we can. Find some of the CIP projects through some of the recommendations that B N F made. So we're gonna have to go through B N F. Identify those projects and see what match one of the three options. So that's, that's the purpose of the bill. Any discussion? If not, Chair would say.
Is it bill two-two eight zero? Vice Chair beside Senator. Senator Coy. Hi, Senator Hashimoto.
Hi.
Senator Yonoye.
Hi.
Hi.
Senator Kidani.
Nice.
Senator Kim.
Hi.
Senator Lee.
Hi.
Senator Shimakunro.
Hi.
Yes.
Senator Gopala.
Hi.
Recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, calling to me to order the nine thirty agenda. So we just have. Two items. First item is SB. Five-eight-two. Uh. Hayima.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, Major General Kenneth Hara. Assistant General State of Hawaii Director of Prime and Receiving Management Agency. We stand in support of this bill. Stand on written testimony and myself and the Hayima staff are available for questions. Thank you.
Members, any questions? I have one question. You know, um. I'm not sure if it's clear to the committee. Who is the, the point person that gathers all the information from all the different departments? To really have a plan on the response?
So for responses Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. As we start transitioning into recovery, so like the long-term housing, that's the state. Disaster Recovery Coordinator Luke Myers under the governor's office.
Okay, so DHS. Um.
Right, would kind of be looped in, but Luke Myers is. Has minimal staffing, so what I've agreed to is have Hayima help to get that plan coordinated that we discussed yesterday.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, B N F.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Louis Oliver, Director of Finance for the State of Hawaii. Uh, thank you again for hearing this bill. Uh, you know, we are proposing an amendment to the bill to turn this into an emergency appropriation bill for the emergency. Uh, for the major disaster fund. Uh, we have provided language for your consideration on this. Uh, you know, not to rehash the discussions that happened yesterday.
The next one.
Five-eight-two.
Oh, okay, so five-eight-two, we're gonna keep it as is and then we're gonna use SB thirty-sixty-eight for the emergency approach.
Oh, okay.
So in that way, we can keep them separate?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll do the emergency appropriation for twenty-four in SB thirty-sixty-eight. And then we can still leave because I think the, the thought is we'll. We'll take everything out of the budget from Maui and put it into this bill so that we can see what the real costs are.
Chair, I think, I think you're.
Oh, mixing the two.
Yes. Five-eight-two is the short-form bill that will be the EA and thirty-sixty-eight will be the bill that has all of the details of the emerg- of the.
Appropriations.
Costs associated with the Maui wildfire. Yes. So thirty-sixty-eight is the bill which thirty-sixty-eight. Am I allowed to talk about?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thirty-sixty-eight is the bill.
You know, you know why it's confusing is because the previous committee. Tried to do the opposite and so we're trying to clear it up now.
That, and, and that is, that is, that is the fault of, uh, the administration will, will, will take on that responsibility.
That's why it's getting confusing because we're trying to leave the original bill with the original contents.
Correct. So the original bill or thirty-sixty-eight, uh, essentially highlighted all of the expenditures that the administration included. In House Bill eighteen-hundred, which is the budget bill. This bill was merely a mirror to show in detail all of the things that were Maui wildfire related. So. With regards to SB five-eight-two, uh, we have proposed some, some language. Uh, for you for consideration so that we can do the EA for the emergency, for the major disaster fund for FY twenty-four. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions, Chair.
Okay, I think at some point though, the members are gonna wanna see a detailed breakdown of what those expenses are.
Correct. And, and in, in a broad sense, right, a lot of that was what you saw yesterday.
Yeah, but you said yesterday, it's still a moving target.
It's still a moving target, so we are asking at this point in time to keep the appropriation level blank. If there was a need to put it. It would probably be on the higher level, but we are trying to get resolution on some of the issues associated with. reimbursable cost and hopefully we get an answer with that within the next two weeks.
Okay, you meaning when the governor comes back?
Correct.
So he returns when?
Uh, I believe he returns, uh, next week, Monday.
Monday, okay. Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Any questions? DHS.
Morning. Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, Joseph Campol is Deputy Director, Department of Human Services here on behalf of Director Betts. Uh, the Department of Human Services stands on its written testimony in support of this measure. And just requests, you know, that. The emergency appropriation be decided upon quickly as we do have expenditures that need to be paid for, you know, within the next two months.
Get members' questions. Good, see, that's what happens when you have a five-hour hearing the day before. You have as many questions the next day. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Ombudsman's office. Attorney General. In support. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good afternoon. Yama Deputy Attorney General for the Department of the Attorney General. We're here to ask for amendments to this bill. To establish the One Ohana Fund, a trust fund intended to compensate victims of the Maui wildfires. Who have suffered serious physical injury or who have died. And we're also asking for an emergency appropriation of sixty-five million dollars. To fund the state's contribution to the One Ohana Fund. And finally, we ask the committee to accept our amendments to establish the statutory framework. For the One Ohana Fund so that it can operate. We're here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the fund.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Maybe for B N F though. So the financial plan that. That we discussed recently with, with the committee. The sixty-five million is included in that?
Yes.
Okay. Questions?
I'm just wondering on the, is that the entire amount, sixty-five million, or is, is this an increment?
That, from my understanding, is the entire amount, but I would defer to the Attorney General for the details.
That is correct. The sixty-five million is the state's portion of the hundred and seventy-five million dollars that have been, has been put together. To compensate families of the deceased and people who were injured in the fires.
And is that the final amount, the hundred and seventy-five million that's gonna take to settle everything?
To settle those two categories of lawsuits. It won't cover obviously property damages. Uh, or other kinds of lawsuits that are fired. So this is just for death. And injury.
Okay, and that's everybody.
Well.
Anybody who.
Anybody who participates. So the fun is the.
But I'm trying to find out who didn't participate and they're gonna sue us on their own, right?
Right.
So what, what, what portion is that? How many, how many?
Oh, we don't know at this point. Um, I think that there's been a lot of interest. There's been some plaintiffs attorneys who have said no way. Um, but I think that there are, um, a lot of people who are either unrepresented or, um. Just would like to bring closure to everything and are interested. So on March first, all of the documents will be released. The website will go live and, um, those folks will be able to start looking at, um, all of the materials.
Okay, so how many people does this cover? How many?
There are a hundred and one deceased as of this time. We don't know the number of injured. It, the, the One Ohana Fund will, um, separate the injuries into, um, people with life-altering injuries. And those that don't have life-altering injuries. Um, we know that there are some people. Who will fall in the category of life-altering injuries. Um, I don't know the exact number, but it, it seems like it's hovering somewhere around four or five people. Um, and we don't know the remainder simply because we don't have access to that information.
Right, so I guess I'm, and I maybe. Uh, this information came out and I missed it, but how did we decide on the number at this point? Uh, or the amount, the dollar amount at this point, if we're not sure how many. People are actually out there that's gonna be part of this, take advantage of this opportunity or those that are gonna be left. What's, who's? Kind of an estimate of, what's that pot looking like?
Right. Um, there were a combination of data points for people to look at. One is, um, it appears that the largest group of people will be the families of the deceased. And I, I think the governor has said that each of those families, the, um. The amount under the One Ohana Fund will be one-point-five million dollars. Um, so that was the largest portion of figuring out the hundred and seventy-five million. Um, we know that there are some life-altering injuries, but not that many. Um, and so, uh. I, I, I think we just sort of, people did the calculation of.
So they were what, about a hun- hundred deaths?
A hundred and one now.
Hundred and one, right?
There are still two, as far as I know, two, um, missing persons, open cases.
Okay, so we took the whole entire hundred and one and multiplied that by one-point-five million.
Correct.
But not, you're not sure that all hundred and one is going to. File and be part of this Ohana Fund?
That's correct.
Do you have any idea? What?
I think that, um. I, I thi- I, I don't have a specific number, but as I understand it, we've been, um, looking at perhaps seventy-five to eighty percent of the people.
That's, that's an estimate.
Yes.
And, and then the cost for anybody else outside of the fund, you, you folks have to come in and ask for. Funding to, to settle those at some point?
For the, uh, injured or?
Well, injured and deaths if they don't take advantage of this opportunity to settle.
If that's the case, if they, they don't, uh, go through this way, then those lawsuits will proceed. And, um, will make their way through the courts over the next several years.
Right, and then we're, at some point, if AG settles with them, then you'll, you'll be coming back to us for more funding.
Probably. Um, again, I wanna be clear that, that the state is not solely responsible for these things and so. Um, in our litigation, we will be making it very clear that we're not accepting responsibility for anybody else's liability on this.
But does it set, does it set anything in the courts as far as saying, well, you did this amount for these people, so. That might be the starting point for the litigation going forward?
I, I don't know that that would be the case. My guess is that, um. They would not start at what this number is because plaintiffs attorneys will believe they'll be able to get a lot more money.
Yeah, right, but I mean, as far as the court maybe might be using that as the threshold and above and not below. Okay, but yeah, you don't have a.
I will say that my understa- my understanding is, is that Judge Cahill is very, who is the judge for all of these cases. Um, he is very interested in, um, settling the cases this way. And, uh, is happy to work with the parties on trying to make that happen.
Yeah, but he might not be around for the next round, right?
Well, hopefully he will be for this one.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm more concerned about those that don't take the settlement. What that, what that cost might be to us. Thank you.
Senator Kidani.
Thank you. I think my concern is by. By, uh, pursuing a settlement is that the state is admitting some kind of fault in this. And secondly, how does their personal insurance or personal injury, homeowner's insurance. Come into play with some of the things that have happened?
Okay, so two parts. First, let me deal with the liability. The state is in a position to have to settle cases all the time and it is standard practice in any lawsuit that a settlement. Um, both, neither party is accepting. Any liability for what has happened. The agreement is. That we're just gonna settle, no, neither party, uh, takes any liability, um, for anything that's happened. So it doesn't set a precedent. And I, I would say that, you know, we get sued all the time for any number of things on any given day. Um, and so the settlement process really is, um. When. When we consider the pros and cons, it's really about how much money are we gonna spend down the road versus trying to settle now?
So I guess I'm not clear as to what we're being sued on is, are we liable, are we liable for the fire? Are we liable for not? Providing. Emergency response. What are we liable for?
Right now, I'm gonna say we're not liable for anything.
Um, yes, so why are we offering a settlement?
Position. But you, you know, that, that is our position in so many different lawsuits. Um. We all know that the, these lawsuits are gonna proceed. We, it's just a fact of life today. Um, and so what we've tried to do with the fund is to bring in the other defendants in the lawsuits. To see if we can't, um, find a way to, um, reduce both the litigation as well as the future expense for this.
I'm, I guess I'm still not getting it as to. Why we're putting ourselves into this when I don't see that this. In, from what I know, that, you know, it's between Hiko, other county, but not the state, so I, I'm.
I will say that the state had property. That, um. Had, that was damaged by the fire. So we did own property in that large swath of area, the burn.
Yes, but did our property start the fire? So I, it's just not understanding why we're liable.
Well, um. We're one of the deep pockets. It happens all of the time. Uh, we had to build this session to try and get rid of joint and several liability for, um, highways. Because we bear the largest sum of accidents that occur on the highways. Just because we are, we, we don't have the ability to show that we're less than fifty percent responsible. So we had a twenty-seven million dollar settlement that we were responsible for. Um, when in fact, our liability was probably far under fifty percent. Um, so sometimes we just have to settle the cases for those reasons. I'll say that bill died, which was unimportant.
So what is the percent that you're looking at that we're responsible for?
We can't say that now and we would never argue.
Because you just tried to do apples and oranges.
Okay, that's the question. Just ask the question.
The question is, she comparing two different scenarios. Highways and this fire. Senator Goodson just said, how much percent are we, we're responsible? She cannot say, so why compare? Why compare them two?
Okay, wait, who's? This is, this is not necessarily, but this is not necessarily, but this is not necessarily the Attorney General's proposal.
No, I saw, that's why I was gonna get that.
Well, it, it is, it is the governor's and I do support it and I'll say, uh, and, and let me say why I'll support it because, um. We're never gonna come out and say that we're liable for X amount, but a court may in five years.
Right.
And we don't know what the state of the parties will be in five years.
Yeah.
And we don't know what a judge will decide in five years. And, um, so it really is sort of a risk benefit analysis of. Trying to settle earlier for less money.
I wasn't trying to, I just was kinda getting confused. You're bringing up the two scenarios.
Both equal liability. That's.
Yeah, liability, but we don't know the amount, right?
Right. And, and we do settle all the time when we don't know when our liability hasn't been established specifically. But let me answer your second question as well, and that was, will this, what about insurance and how does that come into play? This will be a pure settlement. It will not cover anybody's medical expenses or, um, lost work or anything like that. It's just a pure compromise and settlement. Thank you.
I mean, to some extent, it's like, here, take the money, don't sue us.
Exactly. Each, each person will be required to sign a release saying that they will not sue the state or any of the other defendants. For any damages related to the deceased individuals or the, um, injured parties.
So can one, so the one-point-five million per individual, is it more if it was a death or if it's a injury or a minor injury?
Uh, the one-point-five is for, um, the deceased, for the deceased person. Okay, so.
The statute could sue.
So the others that might take advantage of this would get a lower settlement?
Yes, that's the idea.
Senator Murwa.
Yeah, so two things, just following up on the injured. Um, so have you had a scale of how, how much we are liable? We're not liable, but we're putting into the settlement the injured versus the deceased?
Well, it'll be the difference between a hundred and seventy-five million minus the one-point-five. Um, we're not gonna take, if let's say ninety people, ninety families of the deceased take advantage of this. The, the monies left over for not paying settlements to the deceased. Is not gonna go to the injured. So it's the, uh. So it'll be the. The hundred and seventy-five million minus the, uh, one-point-five of the hundred and one, uh, individuals.
So twenty-five million, possibly twenty-five million less.
And so the remainder.
Divided by how many people come in.
Well, for the, for the injured, no. We do have a protocol, the administrator of the fund who is.
Do you have the number of the injured?
No, we don't because it's a.
So that, that, so it could be a lot more people and that were injured and they can only split the twenty-five million, possibly.
Yes.
Not gonna agree to that, right? They don't agree to that, then.
Then they don't have to settle. It's okay.
Okay, so you're willing to roll the dice on them, not on the deaths?
No, I guess what they're saying is, cuz. Here's a hundred, the, the budget for it is hundred seventy-five million. So. If it's, if it's only fifty people that come in, families that come in for someone deceased, then they have the difference now. So instead of twenty-five million, it'll be.
Right.
Seventy-five million.
Yeah, but if they only have twenty-five million and, and all of the injury that come in is asking totals up to.
So then they're gonna be either stuck with what, what's left or they're gonna have to come back to us.
That's what I'm saying.
Or they'll sue us, right? They'll continue the lawsuit.
So maybe, maybe I think her, the question to her answer is you may need to come back to settle. To increase the number of the fund if there are people who would rather just. Settle early.
I think for this fund right now, we would not be coming back. We would let everything go to litigation and at that point. Similar to our usual ATG one that has all of our judgments and settlements that we bring every year, it would be a part of that document.
Oh, so I guess it's like take it now or?
Exactly.
So that, so the question I have is administration, who is administering the fund?
Well, we, no, you have to hire somebody.
And is it, well, is it, no, my question is, um, you're saying that it terminates. The program terminates at some point. Is that when it goes down to zero and the fund terminates for this Ohana, One Ohana?
No, well, the, the bills, the amendment says they have to hire an administrator.
Yeah, but the Ohana Fund will terminate when administration of the wildfires compensation program is complete. So my question is, what is complete? When it goes, the fund goes down to zero or?
No, um, we have a timeline for how, uh, soon people need to apply, um, to participate in the One Ohana Fund, yes. Um, and with respect to the administrator, um, Judge, uh, Ron Ibarra, retired Judge Ron Ibarra. Has agreed to act as the administrator on a pro bono basis. Uh, my office will be helping provide him some support in that capacity. Um, First Hawaiian Bank, uh, will hold the funds and they are doing so in a pro bono capacity. Price Waterhouse Coopers is also going to assist the administrator in any of the accounting issues and they are. Um, providing those services on a pro bono basis as well.
So, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, my question has to do with the Ohana Fund. Uh, and first off, I'd like to say that you're here requesting the funds because we're in session. And we need to have your figures. Correct, yeah, we're in session. Um. Today's television, you did say earlier that some of your litigations, you will not cover, uh, health. To, to a victim.
For the One Ohana Fund? Um.
No, for the settlement, they're not gonna cover. If someone sues, then they have to take it to court.
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't cover.
As an example, um, this morning's television showed an injured person who had serious glaucoma. Um, and he was interviewed this morning and his, um. I guess his attorney or the doctor did say that it seems like it was due to the fire. And so I can see something like that, uh, as probably a litigation, but. How would that be considered because it's an injury and his health, um, was affected? Um, going forward, how would you see that? Because I thought you did say with the Ohana Fund, you will not cover the health part.
Well, if, if he was indeed injured as a result of the fire, then he will file a claim with the One Ohana Fund.
He, yes, absolutely. And further to, uh, Senator Moriwaki's question with regards to the funds. Um, so the funds will stay, um, in the, I guess, the Ohana Fund section. Will remain like for the next couple of years unless, uh, it's depleted. Um, or what happens to, um, the application dates that you did say you're going to put a timeline on it? Uh, what happens to the funds thereafter?
So, uh, once.
If there's a balance.
Right, if there is money left over, then the parties to the agreement, um, have a contribution agreement. And, um, I think that the agreement, there's been a request that the monies be returned to the parties in the. You know, pro rata share of what they put in. Um, but there's also some discussions. Um, I think the governor's talked about this idea that. In the best of all worlds, we would find a way to settle the property damages as well. Because litigating those will be incredibly complex. Um, so there's also a question about whether or not those monies would go into that fund as well.
Thank you.
Wait, that was the, but that was before the six-hundred million yesterday or after?
After, yeah. This is something in the future, yes. I, I, it's not gonna happen anytime soon because, um, the, these, the litigation is gonna continue. We, we have now over seventy lawsuits against the state. Uh, for various things, so.
With regards to the wildfire though?
Yes.
So the property damage settlements, what, what, what do you think the budget would be for that?
I, I'm not gonna take a guess at this point. I think people have been talking about different numbers, but I, I don't have confidence in how those numbers were created, so.
Sure.
So, um, you know, all the investigation is going on and we have this pot of funds that are there. So what if the investigation comes back and it says no wrongdoing on behalf of the state?
I sus- so, uh, my investigation will not include causation, okay? But the after-action report for the, um, Fire Department, along with their collaboration with ATF, will have a causation determination. Um, I think it will only say what the causation was and not whether or not one party is liable or not. But certainly with respect to causation, if they're, if they identify. Where the ignition was and how it progressed, then, uh, that's in my mind, the same as identifying who's at fault.
So, so, so I understand why we set aside funds in case of. We buy insurance in case of, we project in case of. In this case. You know, you talk about property damage, um. You know, the claim has been, property has not been cleaned. Um. Um, like myself, like my husband said, you buy a lot of junk, you pile your junk up and you know, clean them up. Where does that lie without, with being as sympathetic with um, many years of buying stuff of whether it be a resident, whether it be the landowner? How do you disseminate or factor in uh what I've put on my property as a landowner and not cleaning it or maintaining it? Because you have several different big landowners there versus um where the fire had taken place in the residential area uh which could have have prob- probably been also properly cleaned. How do you, how do you guys factor in that portion of it? Because like many of my colleagues, I I, in some ways, I agree that what about the Wainai Fire? When those fires at state lands have been adjacent to and private property? What what is the message that we're sending out? Should we project for those as well and put a fund uh set aside in case of lawsuits? And I mean, we all know that the lawsuits were coming in and that lawyers are just salivating um instead of focusing on the real issue at hand.
Certainly, I think that as we think about whether you believe in climate change or not, weather events and more severe weather events are occurring every single year. One of the um conversations that the governor's had, and I think he's talked to the legislature about it, is creating um some kind of an insurance, wildfire insurance fund for down the road after this is finished.
Um, so we, so we have an insurance fund, so take Hurricane Iniki, right? So after Hurricane Iniki came, we have the Hurricane Iniki Fund. And like I was livid because, I mean, most of the people pay for insurance, right?
Right.
So when I made my mortgage on my house, they said, you gotta pay into this Hurricane Iniki Fund. And I said Hurricane Iniki came and went. So as many of us that have been prepared, as we have mortgages and stuff, we pay into this insurance. So like many others, the question has been posed to myself, where's the insurance on most of these cases? And why is it that the taxpayer dollars are gonna have to fork the bill? Knowing that the investigation being underway, which we've had many stories, that the fire wasn't contained. Um, you know, and I I I'm interested in this after investigation.
Right.
And and see where this takes us because you said it to us earlier that we have been struck with getting more information from the county. I mean, I I I'm trying to understand why the county would withhold information instead of giving it to us in a timely manner so that we can come to closure for the families and settle appropriately if the findings of that information is clearly our fault or anybody else's fault and that the blame should be put in compensation exactly where it should be based on the investigation. I feel like we're we're guilty at the point of forget the investigation, we're just gonna pay out and, I mean, that's like irresponsible, I think of us. And and I and I don't agree with it. I agree with an investigation being taken place as openly with all the information on the table versus us just saying we're gonna set aside one fund, which I always say to my kids, you save on rainy day and you know, live high off the horse, because one day the horse will break its legs and you will be walking once again. But that's, I, and I do believe in climate change, but I also do believe in cleaning your properties. You know, clean your stuff up, so that way we don't end up in the situation that we have. And and that's my issue. I mean, where 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 does it stop? Cause we we not one, one endless um bank and we're gonna hit the taxpayers. They're gonna get hit and as many of us have had the emails, how much more are we gonna pay in taxes? How much more are we gonna pay for climate change? I think if everybody did their part in this and we had a clean investigation and we go off of that clean investigation, because right now, I mean, we just will project for climate change and say, okay, we gotta put hundreds of million down. Sorry, but my question is, where does it stop?
Okay, I got like five sub questions in that, so.
Sorry, I Portuguese.
That's okay. Let me cover a a couple of things. So uh for homeowners who sue the state, I think there were five hundred and sixty-one um um owner occupant homes that were destroyed. So for those folks who have property insurance, then um their insurance company will pay out. If they sue us, the, not the insurance, if the uh property owner sues us for their damages, then those damages will be reduced by the amount of insurance that they receive from their insurance company.
What if they sue us for things that the insurance didn't cover?
Yeah. Besides the actual property, like the contents of the home?
I don't know, you know.
Well, I guess, shouldn't the homeowner have insurance? It's like the guy on the road bangs somebody, no insurance, I mean, is the message we're saying, and nor if you know insurance, the state gonna cover. Is is that the message we send?
Um, that's not the message that I wanna send. Certainly, if you have insurance, then it'll be reduced by that much. If you don't have insurance, then um, my position would be, well, you shouldn't have, you know.
But then we paying out. My question is, we paying out?
I I would are, I would fight against paying out somebody's because they didn't have insurance, because it is sort of roll the dice and if your house burns down, maybe the state will pay you um for all of that and I.
Believe in rolling the dice unless I'm in Vegas and even then, I go with the odds. But thi- thi- this is serious. I I and I have a big problem with this. I have a problem with it and how we going about the payouts. Which is why I asked yesterday, is there a computerized system where we can cross-reference this? Because we know there's some bad apples in the cases out there and we know there's people that really need the help. How do you guys separate this all with all the different mix-ups of this entity is doing this, that entity is doing that?
There's a lot of, um, well, there isn't one spreadsheet that provides that. Um, with respect to uh people getting FEMA assistance or TANF or anything like that, um, those amounts are always looked at before any other monies are given so that we try and push back to to make sure there isn't any double dipping. And um, I'll I'll tell you FEMA will do a line-by-line audit, so i- if somebody thinks that they're getting away with something, FEMA will bill them in the future uh if that happens. So I think we're all trying very hard to manage um those uh numbers and who's getting funds from whom. It isn't easy. Uh, and I do wanna be clear that I I don't mean to make light of it. What happens in litigation is not something necessarily that we can control. We will take a strong stance to say the state shouldn't be liable for something either uh it didn't cause or that is beyond its proportionate share of what the damages are. Um, so I absolutely agree that that's the fight that we'll have.
So the last question, so if there's three different landowners, say a state of Hawaii, two private owners, how would the payout work? Would, if the investigation said, okay, these landowners didn't have their places cleaned? The compensation, because you came up with a hundred seventy-five million to cover one point five of of a hundred and one deaths and then the different tier of injury. You guys, how how you guys figure out the, is it the what amount of land that is owned? Do you guys divvy that up or I can sue you and I can sue the other two private landowners separately?
So with respect to the one Ohana Fund and the um monies for the families of the deceased and the injured, each party put in money that um I think they thought they could afford. Um, certainly, the decision to put money in or not was not um an admission of any kind of liability nor is the amount um saying, I'm, you know, sixty-five million dollars worth of liable for this.
So have the State Department in your case, the AG's office, had conversation with the other landowners to say, this is what we've come up with? And entertaining the idea of this so-called group fund now from other landowners?
So that conversation occurred at um levels above me, um but I did participate in some of those and uh so I'll tell you where we got most of the guidance. Um, Ken Feinberg is an attorney in New York who uh was responsible for the nine eleven fund, the Boston Marathon Fund, the Sandy Hook Fund, um, a a lot of these mass casualty events. And um he also gave his time pro bono and did not charge us for his efforts. Um, but we really, he helped provide some of that guidance in in terms of looking at um you know, one of the things, if we were to litigate uh each of the deceased, we would be arguing over, well, how old was the person and how much money did they make and how much longer were they gonna live and these kinds of things? So from his experience, I I think he helped everybody come to that conclusion of what, of the one point five and how much should be in the fund. Um, so that really didn't have any conversation about who's liable and for how much. We just all know we're getting sued and it's gonna cost us money.
Okay, so in California and Seattle, I want to take their wildfires, for example, how much did the state put behind compensation? I- in the California wildfires that you're aware of and to what extent did those states do the payouts to individuals that lost their lives in wildfires and the adjoining landowners, whether it be in there or in Seattle?
I I don't know what the specifics were. I do know that for California, PG&E was in a much different position than HECO is, given just the value of their company uh and what they could pay. So I I think that in that situation, there are some differences, but I don't know enough to answer the question, but I'm certainly happy to follow up and see what I can find out.
I think we should know that because we've had enough of the California public officials.
So we're not gonna DM.
Okay, yeah, but I I I kinda wanna.
But that allows her, the Attorney General to get the information and then we, we put it back on the agenda.
Where the other states with wildfires stood when lives were lost and to how far of an extent that the state of Hawaii will for competition.
Can I, can I answer one of the other things that I thought were sub questions about how do we plan for the future? What I'm, um, my expectation for the investigation coming out of my office is the the first phase will show just what the timeline and the facts are and that should be out in March. Um, what I wanna be able to do by November of next year is, um, I may not have the full report because we we are behind schedule, but I wanna at least have enough of an executive summary to bring to the legislature that identifies what are the best practices the state should consider on a going-forward basis? Um, what are the policies and procedures that the legislature should consider in terms of appropriating money that the county should consider as well? And I I want to have those recommendations and best practices too by November so that you'll have the option, if you like, to look at those and see what makes sense for Hawaii going forward.
No, I would love to see, but I also would love to see in there the accountability clause where that if the state is to compensate at that level that even as a homeowner, that, you know, insurance, whether it be that or the liability of a car accident, that this lack of insurance, uh people that are not carrying, I I think they need to be held accountable at some level so that we don't become the free-for-all in payouts.
Right, and I will say for the insurance uh in the going forward, that insurance fund, the idea is that individual property owners, small, you know, residential owners are aren't necessarily participating in that larger fund, that it is larger property.
They're looking for the deep pockets.
Exactly, thank you, thank you, Chair.
If you could just follow up with what the criteria might be in terms of the payout, so what what are you looking at? Uh, and you don't have to answer now, but.
I'll tell you what, we do have those documents. Um, they're still gonna be finalized, but I'll certainly have those. I'll see if I can um release them to you sooner than the March first, but I would need to do that outside of a public hearing.
Senator.
Quick question, when the, when the governor made this commitment, um, all these parties already was adjacent to his commitment for the one point five million? And was this all made before the investigation even started?
My investigation started um about August eleventh or twelfth, and so that happened right away. The idea of the fund is something that um evolved with some time and the governor uh was able to speak with Mr. Feinberg uh and his um partner to talk about what this kind of fund uh would look like. I think that um other communities where there's been mass casualties have found this to be a very effective way to um right, there's no money that's gonna compensate people, right? There's just no amount. Um, but it is a way um for people to get some compensation and then bring it in to the process instead of this litigation that will go on for years and years.
So the guys that take the one point five million, they cannot sue the other parties, city, Hawaiian Electric, Jomo Kolo down the road, I mean, they take the money from the state, pow, they cannot sue anybody, they cannot.
Well, it's not just the state, yeah, the the total amount is the one point or the hundred and seventy-five includes the state, the county, HECO, uh.
Yes.
K- Kamae Mas Schools, uh Hawaiian Tell Charter and Peter Martin? And and Peter Martin.
Right, thank you.
So I'm surprised we don't have testimony from them.
Yeah.
Yep.
So maybe when we DM.
I'm not gonna speculate on that.
So, you know, going back, following up on um Senator Milwaukee's question about when does it end? Hearing the concerns of the committee, you know, if if there is consensus at some point to to adopt this amendment, I'm not, there's no sunset date. It the, the language that Senator Milwaukee talked, I guess, outlined was just until the fun ends.
I I, I'm sorry, I believe we have a date certain.
I was trying to look at.
That uh people need to apply.
No, but I mean, this, but that's still gonna be instead. This is gonna be in statute.
Yes, you are correct, Senator. There is no sunset date because uh we did not know how long the program would continue.
So you're suggesting, I'm sorry, that w- once, if we have our date certain, that that would or could be included as a sunset?
Yeah, just based on the questions, uh you know, they're saying, oh, this is gonna set precedent. I mean, when is this gonna end? So we just have to, I mean, why would we leave it in in statute?
Yeah, I see, that, yes. Then the answer would be, I think a sunset date would be fine and I can get you a date certain for that.
Can I ask a final question? What happens if we turn this down?
Well, it's a good question. Um, by constitution and statute, um, claims against the state uh from either judgments or settlements are supposed to be approved by the legislature.
Right, but so if we turn this fund down, then you, we pull out of this disagreement with the others?
Not necessarily, right? Because they could still negotiate a settlement, then come back to us. And if we say no at that point, then then it's.
So why do we do a fund then and let them know how much we're putting in? Why wouldn't we just?
I think, the, the, well, the purpose of the fund is so that you could get the other guys come KS, HECO.
But if we, if this body says no, then you're not authorized to have the fund anyway. So then what happens?
We will continue with litigation. And I suspect that ultimately that that litigation, at least for um death and injury, will be a settlement of some kind.
No, I understand, but what happens to the, to that group? Would that group just go on by themselves and take the state out and settle the those or it it'll disband? And the other parties will not be answered to that.
Can you ask the group?
Yes, certainly.
I mean, we should know everything before.
Yeah, so when you, when you, um, I guess when we meet to this, to do, to go over the timeline, maybe some of these other questions, we can put together at the same time.
Yes.
Cause it might be harder for them to just.
Okay, um. I just. I just, based on yesterday's info briefing, though, I really feel that we have to start to tighten up some of the other things so that we have money for things like this.
Right.
Cause does, I don't see an end in sight right now, I mean. How, we gotta get the state budget under control.
So so Mr. Chair, did we include this one seventy-five in that overall wildfires?
The one sixty-five. Yeah, so that's in the red, the wildfire finance, correct? No.
It it's it's not in the spreadsheet.
It's in the financial plan.
But it's in the financial plan that was presented to the legislature.
Okay, but it's not in that spreadsheet, so that should be added as to. We're gonna come up with a global number, so if the public knows exactly.
Well, that's why I wanted to do these two bills apart from the budget. So that we can, we can see the total costs.
Right, I just.
And even that is not the total cost because they're eating out of twenty-four now through the emergency proclamation. They've already spent seventy-something, was it? But then you're looking at a hundred ninety-nine and then you need another.
So for FY twenty-four, we did take existing appropriation, so not anything additional that was previously appropriated. Redirected that to infuse the major disaster fund to the one hundred and ninety-nine million.
I just spent one hundred ninety-nine.
Yeah, so and and as you saw from yesterday's, we we have obligations now of five hundred and sixty-one. Uh million at the top end, barring any adjustments that happen within the next.
So that's why it's imperative that we have that. That that housing plan ASAP so that we can stop the the.
Absolutely.
The NCS, then we can start to find other things.
Certainly, based on the conversation after yesterday's hearing, I think that all of. The state departments are very clear about our responsibility to define these things for the legislature. And not just for you, but for all of us, we do need to know what those amounts are. Um and we have an obligation, I think all of us feel an obligation to all of the taxpayers to make sure that. It's clear we're being good stewards of their money.
Thank you, okay, we have um.
One more question that I keep to mind about.
Wait, wait, can we go back though? Cause we just have a testifier still. Um on Zoom, we have Alice Lee, the Council Chair from Maui County. Good morning.
Uh good morning, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the um Ways and Means Committee. Thank you for um this opportunity to speak to you. I am in support of SB five eighty-two. But listening to you, your discussions for the last hour, you know, I I feel bad asking for anything at this point. Um despite what you saw yesterday, we are working closely with the mayor. Unfortunately, we didn't have all the answers for you. I I want, I wanna say, I wanna say that. If there isn't enough money uh to satisfy the request of the mayor. Which is for infrastructure, pretty much. You may want to consider something that's also very valuable to us. And that is to expedite the approval processes by DOH, by um SHIPTI. By uh Sea Worm and all the state offices that have their handprint on all housing projects. Because no matter how much money we have, we can't get them out of the gate. Then we we will still fall behind and not be able to to house our people. So I think if you can, if you can do that. That would be a huge, huge help to us. And secondly, the other thing is, um I know this is not exactly on the agenda, but um. To, if the state tax collector can help us collect the TAT for the next two years, that would be extremely helpful.
Okay, well, we have a bill for the last one.
Okay, so thank you very much and and I'd be happy to answer or take your questions and make sure you get the answers.
Thank you, any questions? Senator Kim.
So Alice, I know you folks, you talked about expediting, but do you folks even have all the plans ready? For these projects?
Yes, we do, yes, we do, because, well, as you know, I was a a former housing director. So I I know exactly what's involved in the in the whole process. And oftentimes, let's face it, a lot of the state offices uh take exceedingly long and and.
Yeah, we're aware of that, but we were also told that the counties didn't have all of the plans uh all lined up and so forth, so.
That, well, they're not counting the ones in the queue. We have projects in the queue right now and we have.
You mean projects that may not necessarily be in West Maui, you're talking projects in general from Maui County?
Well, we do have one in West Maui, that's the Pulele Hua one, and that's for like eight hundred homes. But there, but there's a sewer and and water problem with that project. So if we could resolve that, we could move that project forward.
There's still money, right? Yes, yes, okay, okay.
So Alice, Alice, this is Lynn, um so Alice, yesterday, as we heard from the mayor. Um your budget chair was here yesterday with Councilwoman Fulton. And they were unaware of some of the stuff that were actually going on. Um it was news to them as we had the briefing yesterday, so. We're kind of trying to figure out where's the disconnect and whether or not that conversation of the plans that the mayor is having. And what you guys are having, which is why we're having a hard time with the request of the four hundred. A million or four one point seven five, as was requested by the mayor. And then the other issue was the county permits uh in regards to this. So, you know, we're kind of confused on on what you're telling us now. In not just the state and we we were aware of the state's part, but on your guys' part as well as. Fire to the fire that even within the county permits, it's been held up for a long time.
Yes, both the county and the state uh bureaucrats have to move forward. I mean, they have to find ways, like, for instance, like i- if the state, if you require the state to. Have a thirty-day review uh period and then uh at the end of thirty days, it's automatically approved? I mean, things like that, I mean, we have to be bold, you know? We have to just plunge forward because that's what's needed right now. And so and also us on the on the county level. Yes, we don't always know, we're not in complete step with the mayor every single day. But I'll tell you, because of these wildfires, things can, he can tell me something in the morning that changes in the afternoon. That's how quick, how fluid things are. But we are basically focused on the same thing, recovery and rebuilding.
Okay, thank you, Alice, thank you, Chair.
Question.
Okay, we only got like five more minutes, so we have one more bill, so.
Okay, um aloha, Alice, um thanks for being with us this morning. Um I've been following your council bill that you guys passed, probably on the first reading last week on. Bill, uh was it twenty-one? Was that part of your um process to proceed with the emergencies? In uh relation to the developments that you're speaking of? I'm not sure. Twenty-one, I think went into planning committee. Okay, uh any, any project is expedited right now. Any and every project is expedited. The what really holds up everything up is not really the council or the mayor, it is. The permitting process, we understand that, so. And infrastructure. Infrastructure is a little different from permitting, because you have to have water, you have to have sewer. I I think at that point, I think then the procedure would have um probably yourself and the mayor send a message. Um to the, I guess, um whatever you're dealing with to expedite, send it to the governor as well as. To our president and the speaker. That's my suggestion, if you need to um speed up the process, thanks. Thank you very much, but I think if it came also from the legislature, that would be very, very powerful to me, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have one other person in support, but um they're not, they just sent in testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, next item is SB thirty-sixty-eight. HHFDC.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members, Dean Minakami, Executive Director of White Housing Finance Development Corporation. We stand in our testimony in in support. Also note a correction on um page nine, line fifteen. It seems that the thirty thousand or thirty million dollar figure should be two hundred thirty million dollars. So we will request that correction if it is a typo, thank you.
Okay. Um. I wanted to ask a question about the HAP program.
Yes.
So my understanding is that that was all ARPA funds?
Yeah, that's correct.
Um initially, before the fire, that was for the whole state.
Yes.
And then now it's just being focused on on Maui, so that yesterday, the. There's no, you said yesterday, I thought that's what you said.
For the Salivari can clarify.
Sure, thank you, uh thank you, Dean.
Uh cause when we talked about that.
Yeah, so so the HAP program, there was the HAP program that was uh allocated for the entire state.
Yeah.
Uh you know, Maui already had an existing HAP program at which they are in the process of executing. Uh what we did is what we found is that there was additional HAP programs for uh for Honolulu. That was essentially not being utilized, we were having trouble getting that money out the door. So what we did was we got uh some consideration from Treasury. In order to use those funds and redirect it for the wildfire disaster. It broadened the scope of what the HAP program could be used to be handled for all disasters. And so that's why we were able to redirect that to Maui, given the number of mortgage owners that were impacted by the disaster.
So there were no Oahu?
There was some Oahu, but.
Why didn't we at least continue with those who were already?
Yeah, so the people that were already in the queue, those people were 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 taken care of. But towards the end of the HAP program, because because that was a COVID-era program that was started. Uh it, we were having a lot more difficulty in actually getting, executing those monies to get out. And you know, we were trying to expand the program, but it was hard, you know.
But I thought DHA came up with a whole program that they had to stop.
Yeah, so they, so so they did, and because what happened was the utilization of the HAP program was significantly slowing down in the aftermath. I mean, you're talking about two years after after COVID, there was still about sixteen million dollars left in that fund. We were at the point where we were looking at, okay, well, let's try to expand the program, maybe it can cover HOA fees.
I just hope that we didn't impact somebody who were who was depending on it.
Whoever was in the queue that was already in process was taken care of, yes. So we were able to reconcile all of the applicants that were already in the queue. But again, at that point in time, the uptick of the program was.
So the total amount for for Maui went up to?
Twenty-five. Including, I believe, the nine million that they had already in Maui.
Okay. Okay, thanks. So that that that's not gonna be recorded anywhere, though? Because that's not part of the major disaster fund, that's not, that's just additional monies that went to Maui, that's not really on any.
It's not part of the major disaster fund, it's not part of uh, it's not part of um, I guess, general funds and state money that's using. But we are putting a comprehensive list of all of the support that's being uh that's being provided to Maui. And and the reality is, is actually that money could have been used for other places within the state, because it is ARPA money.
Yeah.
That we had quite a bit of discretion on.
Yeah.
Um so for that matter, I think there is going to be a reconciliation and a true-up of all of the support that's been provided from Maui. Because again, we also did allocate twelve point five million dollars for the Small Business Forgivable Loan Program to as well.
And you're okay, and now those are other monies that are not part of, like what you said, major disaster fund or general fund? Those are other categories you redirected, so you could go there.
Correct.
Are there more than just those two?
Uh those are the two that I'm aware of.
That's, they're the larger amounts. Thank you, uh public librarian support, Haima standard support, DCCA.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Mickey Knox for the Division of Consumer Affairs. See, you have our written testimony, I just wanted to quickly explain why this is coming in now. Uh this uh emergency supplemental request is in HB eighteen hundred. We just saw this bill late last week, we're not sure why our request wasn't in here, we saw that the PUC's was. Both those are in HB eighteen hundred. Uh so we are asking for your consideration of our request here, available for any questions.
Thank you, any questions? We gotta.
Yeah, what is he asked?
Okay, the PUC had nine hundred thousand. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like it was, it says for consultants for utility dockets.
Yes, this is additive over our regular budget, we are looking down the barrel of some very big complex dockets. We have very intelligent capable staff, but we're probably gonna need help.
Okay, in react, in re- in response to the wildfire.
Yes.
Oh, that doesn't have to do anything with wheeling and some of the other bills.
No, this is only.
This is only anticipation of dockets related to the wildfire and uh things like the systematic uh. System resilience, which is to try to prevent the next one.
Okay, we might have, we're gonna defer all of this till next week, so we can dive a little bit deeper. That way it'll give us time to review the testimony, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh let's see, Human Services standing in support. BNF in support.
So just, just sorry, uh I know that there were a couple of things, sorry. While I was probably going over the list of everything, but I got a little cockeyed, so I might have missed a couple of things in there, so uh yes, the. The amendments that are being proposed are things that should have been considered as part of the original bill when we tried to draft it all together, so we're okay with the changes.
Thank you, uh Council Chair Alice Lee. In support. And then we have two testifiers in support, anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, we're gonna um defer this till next week, we're just trying to figure out if we should um bring it back on the agenda on Wednesday. Or Thursday, when we hear back from Haima and the county on the updated housing plan. Because it I, it could be related. Um so we're we're, we'll determine that, because Thursday's the deadline.
Just concerned, we need to be answered, I guess, maybe we can, so we come back. I just noticed that we have uh now we get Hawaii Island along with the wildfire as part of the funds. Of the hundred eighty-six million.
Do you know?
The on the on the bill includes, says uh required um funds for Hawaii Island and Maui.
Uh when, uh during the disaster, there were some small costs that were incurred for the for the fires that happened on Hawaii Island. Um I'll have to get back to you reconciling those.
Oh, these are the smaller fires.
These are the smaller fires that happened on Hawaii Island uh on on August.
On a side, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
But you guys are, it's not as big as. Okay, okay, thank you, we'll we'll repost, thank you, Chair.